We have the Chief and Company here. So if I'd like to, and if I'd entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 6A, Vote to Authorize Application Acceptance and Expenditure of Funds from Safer Grant.
All moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post the vote to Chief and Company, please. Thank you for waiting. We have the document with us.
Good evening, Adam Chair, members of the Board. Last Friday, I had sent all of you an email with a cover letter and several spreadsheets outlining the numbers that we'll talk about tonight. So I'm here before you this evening looking for support of the Board to allow us to apply for a Safer Grant, which stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. The Safer Grant program has been around for many years, but as I had indicated in my cover letter to you last week, this is not a grant that I had ever even really thought of applying for before, because the way the program was established when it first came out was it took on a little bit of a, I guess for lack of a better term, a tone that I'm not quite sure was the way that it was originally intended. But when the Safer Grant program first began, a lot of larger cities were applying for the grants in order to avoid layoffs within their departments. So much of the federal funding was diverted to, you know, again, even specifically Massachusetts, you know, Fall River, Springfield, Worcester received one. So a lot of larger departments were receiving this grant in order to avoid layoffs. Many of them received this grant several years in a row. It's a three-year grant period, and many of them received the grant several years in a row. And then at some point, when they would apply for it again and they were denied, the city would turn around and they would either lay members off, or if they had lost members through attrition over that period of time, they may necessarily didn't have to lay anybody off. But at the end of the day, their total complement was the same as it was three years ago when they had received the grant. So the federal government sort of looked back and said, this isn't working the way that it was intended. The purpose of the grant was to provide adequate staffing to try, for departments, to try to better meet NFPA 1710, which was, which is the adequate response standards, to place four firefighters on an engine. For many years, you've heard me talk to this Board and the Finance Committee about my desire to increase our minimum shift staffing from six to seven. Myself, the Deputy Town Administration, we've been working for several years coming up with the plan on how to do that, when was the right time to implement it. And fortunately, we're beginning sort of Phase One of that plan in fiscal '19 by hiring, we have two firefighters in next year's budget, budgeted for a half year, so they'll be coming on in January. So that's step one, with then the following two hopefully coming on in FY '20, which will get our minimum shift staffing, staffing from six to seven, which would be a total shift complement during the day of nine. Now, it's important to point out, I think, you know, when you look at the history of our department, the community, Town Administration, you know, past and present boards of select and Finance Committee, Town meetings, they've been very supportive of the fire rescue department, and we can't say enough about how much we appreciate that. And there's been a lot done over the last several years to address the staffing needs within our department. The big one really allowing us to go 24 hours a day. Prior to much of the staffing needs that we addressed, it was a Monday through Friday operation. The doors of the station were locked at 5:00. We weren't open on Fridays and Saturdays, and you know, the door reopened on Sunday night. So much of the staffing that we have gotten to this point really addressed 24-hour coverage. The current six-person minimum that we have today is the same shift staffing that we had when Chief Bellhumor was the Chief of Department in 2001, when there were six firefighters working. So our minimum shift staffing has maintained the same, even though we've had growth within the department because we had to cover 24 hours a day, our minimum shift staffing has maintained the same for 17 years. With that said, just over the last 10-year period, we've seen an 18 percent, you know, growth in our call volume. Just from '16 to '17 alone, we saw a 2.5 percent increase in our call volume, but it averages out over that 10-year period to just about 2 percent. So the department is getting busier. The last three years in a row, we've had our busiest years on record, and there's really no signs, at least statistically, that that's going to slow down. So my conversations with Town Administration and yourselves over the last couple of years have really focused around getting that minimum increased from six to seven for a total shift complement of nine. But it was in my cover letter this year to Town Administration and the Finance Committee that ultimately, over the next couple of years, our current call volume, current operation, we really need to be at 10. The town operates two staffed fire stations, and right now, there are three firefighters assigned to the West Street Fire Station. If we are at our minimum staffing at six, there are only two firefighters at that station, which means when there is an ambulance call, which is every day, many times a day, the station is empty and the fire truck is essentially shut down. So the additional goal of getting to 10 would ensure that we have a total of four firefighters assigned to the West Street Station, where we would be able to, again, things are moving very swiftly every day. But with four people assigned to the station, it would allow us to at least handle an ambulance call and a fire call with two people, which is not ideal, but if all four people were in the station, we would be able to better meet NFPA 1710 standards by having four firefighters respond on the truck. So that has been the goal that I have communicated to Town Administration. They have been working hard to come up with a plan on how to do that and how to get us there, hopefully in the next four years. So that brings us back to the Safer Grant. The federal government has, within the last year, maybe year and a half, sort of changed the way in which they are distributing staffing grants, where more smaller departments, even smaller than us, smaller to mid-sized departments, that is where the grant money is being directed to. Just locally here in District 7, within the last year to year and a half, the towns of Sturbridge, Charlton, Spencer, and Oxford have all received Safer Grants to address some of their staffing needs. The way that the grant program is laid out is that, and my request before you tonight, and I'll explain the numbers in a little more detail to have them make sense, my request tonight is I would be seeking to apply for a total of eight firefighters on this grant. And if we were to be successful in getting the grant, the federal government would pay 75 percent of salaries and benefits for the first two years, so Year One, Year Two. They would pay 35 percent of those salaries and benefits in Year Three, and then in Year Four, we would own 100 percent of the salaries and benefits of those members. Now, why I think that now is the time to, as I had mentioned before, I had never considered a grant, because the reality is, is we were most likely going to be denied because the money was being directed towards the cities, but we've certainly seen a change in that with smaller and mid-sized departments being issued grants. But the way that it would break down is this, and this is why I think now is the right time. The town has started to make the commitment to bring our minimum staffing from six to seven, which would be a total complement of nine, by essentially committing two firefighters in next fiscal year, and then it would be proposed for two firefighters in fiscal '20, so a total of four members. If the town is looking to make that commitment anyway, I see no harm in applying for the grant in order to receive money to offset costs that we've already sort of identified that we want to do, that that's a goal that we want to get to. Why I decided to add in the additional four positions was really the same rules apply. If the goal was, over the next four years, to try to increase the shift complement from nine to 10, again, it's a four-year grant period. In my mind, it's sort of a no-brainer that why wouldn't we apply for the grant to try to get them to offset the cost, 75, 75, 35, in something that is really already in our five-year plan and has been articulated. So the, I'm not sure if you have the spreadsheet in front of you, but essentially, you know, the way that it would break down is that for the first two years, we would be looking at $171,000 of, you know, we would be required to pay $171,868 for the eight positions. If we didn't apply for the grant, we would own just shy of that on the positions that we're looking to put on anyway, over the, over the next couple of years. And the deputy can, the deputy put the spreadsheet together, so he can certainly ask, answer any questions. But that's sort of where we are at this point. I guess I'll stop there and open it up to any questions that the Board may have.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Deputy, for being here tonight. We've had a discussion before, one-on-one in the office, and I guess what you have to explain, why you need these men. And I guess just to preface it is, I was a call firefighter. I've been out there six years now. And in the course of the time, towards the end of my career there, we found that the call department was dwindling in numbers. And I guess from that point, I'll give it to you and let you explain a little bit about what the need is for manpower, because I was, in effect, dead-set against more full-time firefighters. But over the course of the years, I could see that the call members were dwindling, but the town services still had to be maintained. So I'll let you take it from there and explain a little bit about the need for manpower.
Absolutely. You know, I don't think it's any secret that call and volunteer firefighters is a struggle, not only here in the town of Auburn, but this is an issue that every fire department, combination fire department in Massachusetts is facing, and quite frankly, across the nation. It's a well-documented topic, and if you were to do some, you know, simple Google searches on the reduction of call firefighters in that state, you'll have days' worth of reading on that topic. As a matter of fact, I published a white paper that was distributed both in the Commonwealth and nationwide on the reduction of call firefighters here in Massachusetts District 7, which is 25 cities and towns in southern Worcester County. That white paper can be viewed on our website at auburnmassfire.org. It's under the educational section. But it's a five- or six-page white paper that I think really outlines the issues that not only we're facing here in Auburn, but the 24 remaining cities and towns in Worcester County are facing, where all of them were surveyed as to why they felt there was a reduction in call firefighters. And what we were able to do was really kind of compile a top-10 list of reasons. And the reality is, is that it's the same reasons across every community. It's very difficult for people to volunteer. The time constraints on people today are much greater than they were 20, 30 years ago. 20, 30 years ago, most families, I'm not saying all, but most families were not dual-income families. Many families are not only dual-income today, but each partner has a, you know, one or two jobs. Commitments with kids, but the big one is really the requirements in training, and Mr. Holstrom, Mr. Berthin, you can both speak to this, you know, as call firefighters that, you know, got on 20 years ago. You know, when I got on the fire department in 1989 and joined as a call firefighter, I walked through the front door, I was handed a pair of boots, a coat, and a helmet, and on night one, and said, "That's Don. Follow Don around, and he'll show you what to do." And that was essentially the extent of my training. It was all on-the-job training. That is not the case in 2018. We just appointed, as a matter of fact, today, a new call firefighter to the department. He was sworn in in the Town Clerk's Office this morning. We did, over the last year, we did a recruitment drive for call firefighters. I think it was well-advertised. We advertised it on our social media pages. Auburn Mass Daily ran some stories. We ran a story in The Telegram. Chief Bob Parsons did a story on recruitment and retention of call firefighters within the district that we shared locally. We got two applications. Out of a year's worth of recruitment, we got two applications. We interviewed both candidates. One did not pass a background check. The other one was sworn in this morning. He's a good candidate, but what he has ahead of him in terms of training today is he will be attending the Mass Fire Academy Call Vol Program in June. That's a five-month program, 10 hours a week. Once he finishes that program and gets state and nationally certified, he'll have to come back to the department. Our call firefighters are unionized, so by contract, he'll be required to now get cleared to operate all of the department's equipment internally. Our call firefighters are on a two-year probation just because of, again, they're not full-time employees, so it takes them much longer to get brought up to speed. But the reality is, is that that call firefighter that we appointed today, by the time he does all of his initial training, all of his, you know, internal requirements, begins to respond to emergency calls on a limited level because he has a full-time job, the reality is, is that we're not going to see any real value out of this employee from experience level for about four years. Okay? So that's a long time when we have staffing needs, you know, today. So full-time employees, they certainly provide a much greater consistency, you know, to the department, not to mention that our career people are cross-trained. Many of our call firefighters are not EMT, so they're not cross-trained on the ambulance. We are a fire EMS operation, so that cross-training is critical. We're able to do dual roles with career personnel. So I hear you, Mr. Holstrom, and you and I have had this conversation many, many times, and I spent a large part of my career dedicated to training call and vol, call and volunteer firefighters. I received an award for it. I started out as a call and volunteer firefighter. I get it. But times have changed, and the, we cannot expect today, in 2018, from our call firefighters, what we did even 10 years ago, but 20, 30 years ago. And I think both of you, again, knowing the current operation, knowing what you, you know, in your experiences, call firefighters, I think you would have to agree with that statement, that things have changed, and the annual requirements for training are much greater than they were before. We can't get, you know, I look at the list of open board and committee positions that we have in town that we have a hard time filling, and we're looking for people to come to, you know, a meeting every other week for a couple of hours, to have someone come in and say, "I want to be a call firefighter," and for us to say, "Well, you got to do, you know, 250 hours of initial training, training every other Monday night, you know, four or five different state and national certifications that you have to review annually, on top of, you know, 50 percent training requirement, 25 percent attendance on emergency calls." That's a lot, it's a lot to ask on part-time people. But again, the cross-training is really the bigger thing, because, again, we are a fire EMS agency.
Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you for that, because that's an in-depth discussion of what it was, and I know there was a lot of people said that, you know, after I left the fire department, got to the Board of Select, and there's going to be a full-time fire department, and that's all it's going to be that I want to have done. And that's not the case. I want to be sure that the services are provided to the town, and it's looking like, that's what it is. I mean, it's not the same old woodhouses anymore. There's a lot that have to be, you're involved with, with training, and you've got to have eyes in all sides of your head. But I guess I'm going to try to compare apples and oranges, and I guess with the monies. What I'm saying is, the police department at one time before was, through the state, had the Quinn Bill. The Quinn Bill, they were going to pay for a lot of the salaries of the police officers at one time, and then all of a sudden, it was handed over to the town. Now, the Quinn Bill was still in place, and depend upon your education is how much more you got. And we wound up eating all of it towards the end, and now the Quinn Bill, my understanding is, no longer. But going to the Safer Grant, you're talking about eight firefighters. You're talking 75, 75, 35, and then the fourth year, we own them. Good chunk of change. I guess, I want the services. I want to be sure the protection is there, but I guess, and I want to see, can the town support that? Bringing that number of people on in the next four years without hurting our budget and without going back and saying, "You know what? This is going to work for us. We're going to have to shorten you up for men." I don't want to see that either. So I guess my question is, and that's the comparison, the Quinn versus the Safer Grant, after four years, we own them, can our budget support it? We are doing well at 1.1 percent of the tax base. We're not at 2.5 percent. Well, we have to go to the 2.5 percent. Will it cost us, the town, more to be able to do that? So I guess, as much as I want it, I got to be careful of it. So I want to just be sure I asked that question.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sorry.
I was going to let Mr. Kasnovich just address some of the financial questions, but if you want to add something now?
Yeah, just, so, you know, and just to be clear, the Quinn Bill was, it was an educational incentive that provided police officers reimbursement, or the town reimbursement, for their education. This is, this is not the Quinn Bill. This is a, it's something completely separate.
And like I say, it was the apples and oranges. I was trying to make the comparison.
Yeah. The staffing grant is, if we are awarded the grant, the funding is, first off, there's only that commitment of three years. But if we're awarded the grant, we're guaranteed that three-year commitment. So we sort of, we know what we're walking into. We know that this isn't going to be funded, you know, beyond, beyond that point, but there's no fear in, we accept the grant, and then in Year Two, they say, "We're not paying." It would be a three-year commitment. I'll turn over to Ms. Kasnovich.
So as a matter of fact, we had extensive discussions today regarding the finances of this grant. And certainly, from my perspective, and Town Administration's, on the whole, their perspective is, this is something that, if applied for and accepted, we have to make a three-year commitment to fund at least our share of this project. But more importantly, as we discussed earlier today, we can't rely on the federal dollars to fund this over a three-year period and then absorb 100 percent of that hit in Year Four. So we would have to earmark a portion of revenue every year and build it into the budget, even though it's not going for direct salaries as an offset to these additional hires, we have to build in into the budget. So we build that reserve up over a four-year period in time. Once we build into the budget, and it may go into a stabilization account or a reserve account, we can't use those reserved dollars to fund future year salaries, but it becomes part of an annual appropriation, so we're not picking up that full nut in Year Four. So yes, it is going to take a commitment. It may require, not knowing what the resources are going to be in Years Two, Three, and Four, we have to be prepared to potentially have limited growth to live within the resources that we have. I can't look at a crystal ball. We've been fortunate in the past several years. We've had new growth above and beyond what we estimated. State receipts have been very generous to the town of Auburn. Whether that's going to continue in future years, we don't know. But that's something where we would have to be prepared to deal with if a decision is made to go forward with this plan.
Mr. Holstrom, then, Mr. Berthin.
Okay, I guess, just as a follow-up, if we can't absorb all that in the fourth year, you want to build in some sort of reserve into that budget, but there would have to be some understanding in that budget that there wouldn't be any, if we're not using it, we're not going to use it, and transfer it on to the following year. We can't say, "You know what? I've got to buy, you know, a roll of hose. We're going to do something. I've got that extra money in reserve." We want the manpower. And if you want the manpower, then we have to make sure we maintain that reserve for only the manpower, so we can absorb that down the road without hurting the taxpayers providing the services that they require.
So we're going to have to provide for an annual appropriation as an offset to that 75, 75, 35. So when Year Four comes, we're not picking up the full 100 percent, because we wouldn't have the capacity to do it at that time. So maybe it's an opportunity to say, "We're willing to make a commitment. We are going to tie up a portion of tax levy or general fund revenues that may go into stabilization, which is a benefit to the town, but it allows for a level of funding that can be, can be diverted from stabilization back into the fire department when that time comes."
I'm in full support of that, and I think from just the discussion with the Chief tonight about manpower, where I came from years ago to where we are today, yeah, the services are required. You are busy, and you need to have that man behind you. And right now, sometimes you haven't got it. And the call members are shortening up, just as you explained tonight. So, yeah, I am full support of this, but I want to be sure that the taxpayers aren't just, you know, boom, here it is for you. We want to be sure that there was some plan in place to.
So I think the action that you're being asked to take tonight does not commit you to funding that. It just allows them to apply for the grant. Let's see how the federal government reviews our application, because it helps the Chief out, too, to determine the weaknesses and deficiencies within the department based upon that application. So there is a benefit by applying for that, but it would have to come back to you, and we could have a discussion about the financial impact if, in fact, there is a consideration for approval by the federal government.
Awesome.
Mr. Berthin.
I'm in full support of going for this grant. I do have a quick question. Now, we're getting closer to the Auburn Mall, to the Fallon facility there. You know, we get several calls a day to Fallon now over on Milbury Street. They're quadrupling their size. Are we going to see a lot more activity, do you think, from that? Just as a means of the fact that we do need more support on that, the fire staffing. And also, I'll let you answer that question about Fallon, but also as far as, if we, if we didn't have 10, or we didn't have two people at, you know, left behind if there's an ambulance call from West Street, we always need to keep in mind that if something happens, we have to have callbacks. We still have expenses there as a town. We have to call firefighters in, which sometimes, you know, can be pretty expensive. So it's not, this is why I'm in favor of as much full-time staffing as possible, because basically, we have the people there that we need. If we don't have the people there that we need, we have to get people there. We do a lot of mutual aid to other towns. I'm on Paxton. Paxton does a lot of mutual aid to other towns. You know, how many times I hear up there that, you know, we're primarily a call department up there, and we have great men up there as well, but, you know, we're not, those trucks aren't necessarily leaving multiple trucks within, you know, a matter of seconds or a minute or two. You know, the first truck usually is leaving. Auburn has the benefit, and we've, you know, enjoyed the benefit of these, these great response times, but it's just an incredible, incredible endeavor for, for everything we have going here in town when you have six, seven, eight people on staff. So if you feel you need 10, and we can get some grants to get there, then I think we should definitely go for it, and I'm definitely in favor of the staffing. I would like to hear what you, what you have to say, though, what your projected increase is going to be with that new building.
Absolutely, Mr. Berthin. Through the Chair, I just want to address mutual aid, because this is something that's brought up a lot. Finance Committee has talked to us about it in the past, about mutual aid. I'm often asked about how much mutual aid we provide. We had this conversation. We had this conversation today. Captain Brigham, who's the lead author on this grant, myself and the deputy met with town administration today, and this topic came up about mutual aid, and it was, you know, the captain that mentioned it. Mutual aid has become a part of our daily operation. There is no way that we could function and operate on a daily basis the way we do without our mutual aid partners coming into the town of Auburn. And there is no way that our surrounding partners could operate and function without us. And there may be this perception that we do more mutual aid, but at the end of the day, in 2017, we responded out of town for 127 mutual aid responses. And that's out of a total of over 3,600 emergency calls. We went out of town mutual aid 127 times. We received mutual aid 125. So within two calls, it, it's pretty much, it's, it's an even swap. And in conversations with, you know, chiefs in other communities, it's about the same. So although it may seem, or be perceived, that we're going out of town and providing a lot of mutual aid, we are receiving essentially the same amount of mutual aid. We receive, we had mutual aid ambulances in town, I think, twice on two separate occasions today because we had back-to-back calls, we didn't have resources to provide, and we had mutual aid ambulances in the community. It's something that we can't live without. Our operation would not be able to function without our mutual aid partners. So I want to address the, you know, you had said, Mr. Barthium, you, you think you need 10. I want to just talk a little bit about how I, how I got there. That's not an arbitrary number that, you know, just pulled out of our head. Again, at the end of the day, we have two staffed fire stations. And I've, you know, I've, I've said this, you know, publicly in the past, if a community is going to make a commitment to have a staffed fire station, or, you know, or have two fire stations, let me back up, a staffed fire station, we have to staff it, and we have to staff it appropriately. And I think the community has spoken loud and clear over the years about the passion that they have for the West Street Fire Station. It's a critical, you know, when we look at our district responses, they're not far off from a 50-50 split. It's, you know, 50, you know, 53, you know, 70, 47, you know, in terms of, so they're, they're pretty evenly distributed on the calls out, out in West End. That's only going to grow as development continues to happen in the West End of town. And we have several projects before that are at least in the very beginning stages. You know, one of them is a, is a potential 300-house development out in the West End. We have some other commercial endeavors out there. So the West End is, is going to continue to grow, which is, which is going to really further define the need for that station. Trucks themselves do not respond to emergencies. Firefighters on trucks respond to emergencies. So I, I want to provide the best service that we can to the community and not the illusion of the best service that, that we can provide. So if, if we're going to have a, a staffed fire station, then I want to make sure that we're at least working towards, you know, staffing it appropriately where we can, we can get the trucks out the door. Based on our current model with two staff stations, that would allow four firefighters to be in the West End, covering an ambulance and an engine with, with two firefighters on it, which, again, is still not ideal. NFPA 17 recommends four firefighters. That's ideal. I'd be thrilled with three, you know, consistently. But four firefighters in the West End would at least allow those two vehicles to move at a minimum with the two people on it. And then back at headquarters, there would be six. That would be three on the engine, two on an ambulance, and then a supervisor, a staff supervisor in a vehicle. But again, even if we have the 10, with vacation time, sick time, we're still going to be working down to our minimum of seven. So the goal of raising the minimum from six to seven, even if we have 10 on a shift on a good day, there's a three-member buffer for time off that our minimum is still going to be seven. Our call volume has really driven us to where, again, to where we are today. Over the past 10 years, we've had an 18% increase in our call volume. It's roughly about 2% a year. It was a little higher last year. It was 2.5%. And if the data shows us anything, I, I have no reason to believe that that's going to slow down, but only increase. Again, getting back to your original question about the Reliant. Right now on Milbury Street, with what they have for a facility with Reliant, we don't do 100% of the ambulance calls out of there, thank God, because we couldn't, we couldn't do 100% of the ambulance calls. So they do contract with private ambulance providers to do much of the lower-level, non-emergency stuff, but the state requires that anything that is a true emergency, they are required by state law to dial 911, and we would respond. And we, we do a lot of ambulance calls out of that location. When they move into their new location at the mall, they're going to also be moving other facilities that they have from Worcester to this location. I've heard early estimations that they're expecting foot traffic in that Reliant on a daily basis to be anywhere between 2,500 and 3,000 people a day going through that facility. So do I anticipate that there is going to be the potential for additional medical responses out of there? I do. I've run preliminary numbers. They're not earth-shattering, but do I anticipate that we're going to have a, a certain percentage increase in call volume when the two Penrose properties open? I do. Will we have increased call volume if this 300-unit apartment complex in the West End goes? Significant. So again, I have no reason to believe that our call volume is not going to continue on the trend that we're doing, and you've heard me say this before. You know, outside the city of Worcester, we are the busiest fire rescue agency in southern Worcester County. We are fifth busiest overall in Worcester County. We are a busy fire rescue agency. And we're running the same, that's the same number of shift staffing today that we were 13 years ago. Even with that increase, that 18% call volume over 10 years, our total complement of firefighters per shift, including the number of firefighters and our, our number of firefighters hasn't changed in 13 years, our minimum hasn't changed in 17 years. So the 10 firefighters is not an arbitrary number. It, it's designed to specifically staff the vehicles that are responding, on average, 10 to 12 times a day, handling over 3,600 emergency calls in the community. So that's how that number was derived.
Thank you, Chief.
If I may, to answer a couple of your questions, too, I, I think this might help give a level of comfort to the board. I know the item says that we're seeking a vote to authorize the application, acceptance, and expenditure of funds, because that's what we do on standard grants. Our recommendation was actually going to be for you to vote just to allow us to authorize the application. We can continue the discussion if we get the grant. Quite honestly, we, we don't want to put all this work into it, and I say we, Captain Brigham is doing an outstanding job. He's at 63% on the application.
It could be higher.
It could have moved up a little, but there, there are benchmarks that have to be met, and he's been working really hard on it. The bottom line is, should there be something catastrophic, let's say we get the grant, three years down the road, something catastrophic happens to the budget, which we don't anticipate, we're in a five-year, every, every year, five years out, we, we believe that we'll be able to, to support this. If for any reason we needed to have massive layoffs, there's nothing preventing us from having massive layoffs. We don't want to do that, but we can. This does not commit us to keeping after the three-year period. But I think what we'd like to ask the board is to just allow us to go forward with the application. If we are awarded the grant, we can come back to you for further conversation about whether to accept it or not. We, we hope at that point that you accept it. If for any reason we find something, or you, you all have a concern that we're not able to answer for you, and we're available not just tonight, but, you know, between now and the time we supposedly would hear, which would be probably in July, there's another step beyond that, too. Even once the funds are awarded in July, we still have to then go to the town meeting in the fall and amend our budget to address the questions that you had. It's not in the budget right now because we don't know that we're getting it. So there's still several steps, several opportunities for the board to have input and make a final decision. I think what we were hoping tonight is to be able to go forward and authorize the application because it's due at the end of the month.
April 27th.
April 27th. So if that helps the board in their decision, because you may have additional questions. We didn't want to come with you, all of this information tonight and say, "Here it all is. Make a decision tonight. We're, we're in it or we're not." These are big decisions. But the authorization to go forward and have Captain Brigham get the remaining 37% of that, of that done.
No pressure.
And, and I tease, but he's, he's done a great job, and Deputy Chief Johnson has done a lot of the financial analysis on this, too. So there are a lot of people that are working on this, but we don't want you to feel pressured that you have to make this decision tonight, and we're grateful that you all support it. But at this point, I would just recommend that you vote to authorize the application, unless you truly feel you've had all your questions answered, and then you can vote the whole thing. But just allowing us to go forward should, should hopefully satisfy the board. And then, as, as the chief mentioned, and I think Ed mentioned it, too, we want feedback from the federal government. If we don't get this grant, why didn't we get it? Where are our shortfalls? What do we need to do for future grants and for other opportunities? So I think this just gives us a great opportunity that we've never had before to even apply for this.
I think Mr. Capitan has one last question.
Yeah, I do have a question. First of all, I would support the recommendation to authorize the application because I think, hearing about this on Friday, it's a little early for me to come to a conclusion, even though we talked about it, and I have full faith in what you're doing. So I certainly, it's, it's more of a wanting to look at it a little further and have further conversations with you. But my concern, which on the face doesn't deal with this, is we're going through the process of looking at a new, potentially a new combined fire and police. So my biggest concern is, I don't want to be sitting here 20 years later and hearing what I'm hearing about the police station. So is this in the proposals that you've been working on as far as your RFP? Because, again, buildings cost an exorbitant amount of money, and it costs a lot of money when they're not done right. And we've certainly seen that with the police station. So I, I certainly don't want to sit here and have that problem a second time in my short time on the planet. So I would appreciate your commitment that this is going to be in there and that wherever you put this building, I don't want to hear, like I heard 20 years ago, "We can do it and we can't." And so that's, that's my biggest concern, is if we're going forward, and it sounds like we probably do need a new building, and maybe we need two new buildings, I don't know, or we're going to get rid of one, and we're going to do something with the other. So can you discuss that with us? How you're going to take, if we're going to continue to see these increases, however meritorious they are, how are we going to accommodate that in a building that you're already kind of squeezed from 1965? How are we going to address that? And is it on the radar for the proposal that we're, that you're working on right now?
Through, through the chair. That, that's a great question. So we're, we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, we're going to go out to bid with the RFQ. The RFQ is ready. We're in the last final review, looking to retain the engineering firm. Like, like any project, they will come in, they'll look at our current operation staffing, and they'll make recommendations, like any building should, potential future growth over the next 50 years. I will tell you this, that if nothing were to be done to either of the stations today, the current staffing models of 10 on a shift, we have the ability to accommodate that staffing both at the West Street and headquarters with what that configuration is today. So when we recently did the renovation upstairs at headquarters, we built an extra room out for that. So even if nothing were to be done to our facilities, the current stations have the ability to hold the personnel that would be stationed at those buildings. Our major problems within the stations revolve around administrative space, training space, and more importantly, base space. You know, we have many vehicles and, and equipment that are outside, you know, it, the building was housed or was constructed for vehicles that are half the size of the vehicles that are in there today. And those are just, and, and we buy, and, you know, you, again, Mr. Holstrom, we buy smaller vehicles than most of the communities have. Our Engine 3, we, we typically buy city model trucks, where if you were to put our Engine 3, which is our lead engine, next to an engine from the town of Milbury or the town of Charlton, our vehicle looks like a Tonka truck compared to theirs. So we buy, we buy a different type of fire truck, which is a, a smaller version anyway. But our big issue in the station doesn't necessarily revolve around the space for people. It's the, it's the adequate space for administration and equipment. But if we were to have 10 a shift today, both stations are accom, are able to accommodate the six at headquarters, four at West Street.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else.
I'll make a motion to re-authorize the application.
I'll second it.
And acceptance and expenditure of funds for the SAFER grant.
So you're doing the entire thing?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
And through the chair, if, if we do hear from the federal government that we are successful, we will bring this back to have further discussion with the board, so you will have another opportunity, you know, to vote yea or nay on, on whatever proposal we put before you.
Great. Thank you for being here, all three of you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Cap.